Okay, I'll call this our city council meeting of December ninth, two thousand and nineteen to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott, Lawson, Anderson, Bybee, Dare, City Attorney Adams. City Attorney Adams.
We see you.
City Manager Crutts.
Here.
We have a forum, thank you.
Okay, if you all stand for the invocation speaker today, it'll be Pastor Christopher Dare. Amen. Thank you. If you're bringing standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mr. Anderson.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring back to the council and we'll move to five point one, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to pull anything, move in the ring, otherwise look for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, look for a second. Mr. Lawson, we have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, six point one, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Same deal, anybody want to pull anything out? And Ms. Bybee?
Well, no.
Want to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the Sparks City Council meeting of November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion, look for a second. Mr. Abbott.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Seven point one, recommendation for Sparks High School Railroad Marching Band, and I assume that's part of it over there. Yes. Thanks for coming. Donald?
Yes, sir. Perfect. So, whereas the two thousand and nineteen Railroad Marching Band is the first Sparks High School band to win first place since the beginning of the Nevada Band Championship. The Sierra Band Crusade, uh, the Band Championships started in nineteen seventy-nine, hosted by the University of Nevada. On several occasions, the band has placed second, but has never claimed a championship title. Whereas this season included five competitions or shows for the band, they received first place at the Galena Performance of Champions, the Reed Performance Clinics, the Deboni Ranch Invitational, and the Sierra Band Crusade, and second place at the Nevada Day Battle of the Bands. And whereas two years ago, the band was in jeopardy of no longer being a program at Sparks High School, the community rallied together and raised the forty-five thousand dollars as a one-time expense to staff a teacher for the program so he did not lose the band. Since then, the band program has grown from eighteen students to forty-five in this year's class. And whereas there are many reasons why it has grown, and one of them is the leadership from Garrett Spalka, the director of the bands, and Mariachi. He ensures the program members are productive, respectful, always well-dressed, and prepared for the next show. The motto is better every day. And it is without doubt, the students have lived this as they continue to push each other to achieve this goal. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ronald E. Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, to hereby join the city council in commending the Sparks High School Railroad Marching Band for their achievement of winning the Northern Nevada Band Championships.
We need somebody to come down and accept the award, please, or the commendation. You know what you might do is take a picture, go sit right in between them there.
Should I come down?
You want to get them down here? Yeah, come on down.
Have a seat and give us your name. There's a microphone right here. So I'm Garrett Spalka, um, and I've had the pleasure of, of leading this group of students, um, and their peers over the last, this is my, my third year at Sparks High School and, um, they, huh, sorry. I love these kids. They're wonderful. Sorry. I love these guys so much. They, uh, they mean a lot to me. I've spent over two hundred hours of after-school time with them. And so I, I get to know them, I get to know their families. Unlike, unlike some other teachers where we get a kid for a semester and we say, alright, well, I might see you in a year or two, like at a higher level. For most of these kids, I get to see them every semester, all four years in high school. So the relationship I get to, to build with these students is, is one that is, is one that I hope to have with, uh, for a lifetime with them, and I'm so incredibly proud of what they've done. They, uh, they can all tell you stories of what a tyrant their band director can be. And, you know, well, he demands a lot of us, and I do, I like, I absolutely do. And it's with that high expectation that, that we, it was one of the first things I instated when I got to Sparks High School is that, you know, our motto is going to be better every day. And when we talk about that, we talk about better musicians, better people, and better citizens. And these students live that, um, and they, they pushed me to be a better teacher every day as well. And so I thank you to the city council, um, thank you to you guys. Yeah. So, um, I'll let, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves and what, what you guys play and what year you are and stuff like that. Again, thank you so much for this. We very much appreciate it.
The hard work's paid off, obviously.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Why don't you just start over here, and then we'll just go right to the, your right. Just say your name.
I'm Caesar Romillo, and I play the tenor drum. I've been part of the band for four years. And so far, I've loved this, um, of this class, mostly because Spalka has pushed us to be better, and we do the same to him. And I thank him for that.
Good.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lee Fisher. Um, I was the drum major of the band, so I got to conduct and lead. It's my second year with the band. Um, last year I was in color guard. And I really enjoy marching band. Like, it's been really fun, especially with Spalka as our director. Like, I feel really safe in the band room, and it's like, kind of like another family, I guess, for me. I don't know, I really enjoy it, and I've, I'm super glad I have the opportunity to take a part of this, and especially this year, since we've got much better, and we've improved so much, and I'm just, yeah, really thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. Hear me okay? Okay. Hi, my name's Rosio Asensio. Um, I am this year's color guard captain. Unfortunately, my other captain wasn't, couldn't come today, so I'll be speaking for both of us. This year has, we've improved a lot from last year, because, um, I joined marching band last year, uh, color guard both years. And, um, as Spalka always says, um, it's fun competing, but it's always fun to win first place. So, um, yeah, I see this band going places, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's, uh, Shaden Gibson. I play the contratuba at Sparks High School. This is my fourth year in band, but, uh, second year in the Sparks High School band. And I can say without a doubt, I have enjoyed so much of this band, and all of what it's worth, how much it's grown, everything. Almost every single aspect of this band just shows through our first place. And what, well, even if we didn't get it, what we've accomplished is just been so invigorating and so inspiring to me that even, like, I, I know I'm going to do marching band for the next few years of my life, because I know how much I've grown from it, and I know, you, like, I can push myself this hard because I've learned so much from this program. I just thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Msalon Webb. I play the trumpet. Band, band, my whole life has been like, one of the, my favorite things, you know? I'd come to school and I'd be like, I really want to go to band class. And where, before high school, there was no marching band, and, and marching band, it was, when, when marching band was induced, introduced to me, I was like, this is going to be difficult, this is going to be hard, I don't want to do it. And then I stuck with it, and it was possibly one of the best decisions I've ever made in my whole entire life. You know, the people and like, it's, yeah, the people are fun. Doing the competitions are fun, it's just, it's, it was a blast, you know? And last year, when we got second place, I was so disheartened because second place, it's not fun. We worked so hard. We worked so hard last year, it was terrible. And this year, I, I was not, I was, I was going to have, I was going to let that happen again, so, you know. I liked this ethic this year, it was, it was, it was a lot of work we got done, we put in so much effort, and we got in first place. It was, it was amazing, it was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rafael Gonzalez, Raf for short. Um, I've been part of the band for the past two years, and I can say this band is my second family, hands down. Every day I come in forward, I come in looking forward to going into the band room. It's like, walking in, it's like when, when you go home to your grandma's house and it smells like freshly baked cookies, that's what the band room smells like to me. That's what it is, that's like, it's like, we're all one big family and, like, we lose together, we win together, but we always want to see each other improve. Even if, like, we're a unit, we want to see each other individually do better. I mean, I don't really have the words to explain it right now, but I love this man Spalka so much, like, he's, he's like my grandfather, you know, he's like my dad. Well, he acts like, he acts like, he's one of the most important people in my life.
Thank you, that's great.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Rodriguez, but you can call me Jenny. It's my second year of the band, and I really like it, because you can make like a lot of memories there. And, like, it's how they said, it's like a family, and, like, as they said too, it's like, you're always looking forward to, like, being there, because they're always going to have your back no matter what, like, even if it's nothing like too important, but other than that, they're really good people.
Hi, my name's Charlize Torres. I'm the band president this year. This is my fourth year in the band, and since Spalka came into our family, he's been a very productive, mm, productive, no, supportive person. And he gives his all to our band, and this, these people are like my family that I go to. I made lots of memories in the band over the past four years. I'm just so proud of those people, because they've grown so much. I've been watching them the past two, two, three years. And, yeah.
You know, I want to, I want to call you coach, but, um, I think you are. And, uh, this is the second group we've had at Sparks High, and these are perfect examples of young adults that people should look up to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, seven point two is Sandy's Book Nook. Come on down. Grab a, grab a chair, or both chairs and.
Okay, I'm going to read a commendation first, and then we'll make a presentation, and we'll have you make some comments afterwards. Whereas Sandy's Book Nook is part of the Little Free Library, the world's largest book-sharing movement, and was made possible by the Burke Daly family in honor of their late wife and mother, Sandra Jean Burke. Sandy's husband, Mike Burke, built the library. It was placed on the Diedrickson Elementary School campus and will be dedicated on December twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas Sandy Jean Burke was a longtime volunteer in the school library at Diedrickson Elementary School in Sparks, Nevada, she also volunteered at the Bud Beasley Library while her grandchildren were students there. In addition, she and her husband, Mike Burke, volunteered at the Fernley Public Library where they lived until her passing. And whereas Sandra loved to read, there was a never, never a time that you saw her without a book close by. She loved to see kids in the library getting excited about books, and she read to her grandkids every chance she got. She would be proud of her little library, and we are quite sure she looks down on it from heaven, keeping it safe for all of you who open its doors. Now therefore, on behalf of Ronald E. Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, we hereby join with the city council in commending the Burke Daly family, Mike Burke, Marcy Burke, Laura Burke, Morgan Daly, Connor Daly, and Lillian Daly, for keeping Sandy's memory alive and bringing such a wonderful memorial to the children in our city in witness thereof, uh, on this day, twenty-first of November, two thousand and nineteen.
Take a picture, and then you say a few words. Unless you want to say a few words, so you don't have to get up twice.
You know what you're thinking, Ron.
I'm always thinking.
Hi, on behalf of my family, I just would like to say thank you. My mom had specific, uh, she did not want a funeral, didn't want any, she just thought that was unnecessary. But this was a perfect way for us to, memory, uh, in memory of her and how she did work, um, at the Diedrickson Library, um, for quite a number of years. Yeah. So, unfortunately, some of you know that the first library, um, had been vandalized, um, Sparks, not Sparks. School police came out, did a vandalism report, so we have another one in the making that'll be up, uh, hopefully by this Friday. So, a little sturdier. So, and Charlie, your idea of getting together with the leadership team at Mindive and Diedrickson, so they could be the stewards of this, uh, community library, so, we will definitely do that.
And I'm going to address the vandalism here in a second.
Okay.
Let's get your picture. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. Thank you. You know, it's come to my attention that Sandy's Book Nook was vandalized, uh, last Thanksgiving weekend. Vandalism affects our community's quality of life because it damages things that we need and care about. The Burke Daly family, who built Sandy's Book Nook in honor of their wife and mother, is hard at work to rebuild and dedicate this little library on December twentieth as planned. But we are heartbroken about this. I would ask that as a community, we keep an eye out for our public spaces and special additions to our community like this library. Thank you. Okay, seven point three and seven point four, Neil.
Mayor Smith, and members of the council, and members of the public, uh, we have a total of four vacancies across two different boards to announce today. We will be accepting applications for both of these through the close of business on December sixteenth. The first two vacancies are on our Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. We are looking for, as I've mentioned, two folks to serve two-year terms that would run through November sixth of two thousand and twenty-one. We are looking for people that have a background in either the visual arts or performing arts. Uh, and as I've mentioned, uh, we're, we're taking applications through December sixteenth of, of two thousand and nineteen. The second board that we also have two vacancies on is our Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. We are looking for an alternate position in Ward Two and a regular position in Ward Three. Both of those positions, uh, by their nature and the structure of the board, are coterminous with their appointing council member terms. So the Ward Two position would run through on November fourth of two thousand and twenty-two, and the Ward Three position would run, run through on November fourth of two thousand and twenty. Uh, and as I've already mentioned, the applications will be taken through the close of business on December sixteenth. For folks who are interested in applying for either of those or any of those four openings, you can complete a community services application, uh, you can get it either from the city clerk's office, or you can go to the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. If you go that route, click on Government on the webpage, then under Boards and Commissions, click on Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission, fill out the form, and press Submit. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Move on to Consent Items. Looking for a motion, or if you want to pull one, please. Mr. Abbott.
I'll take a motion to approve eight point one to eight point three, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, look for a second, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay. Move on to nine point one, General Business, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of the Mayor's Recommendations to Appoint Two Planning Commissions from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. And you, you can read those, Neil.
Okay. For the record, Neil Crutts, City Manager, happy to read the listed names. In alphabetical order, Candace Beck, Holly Carlson, Jonathan Crawford, Ryan Horning, Donald Kennedy, Kelly Lucetti, James Mormon, Reed Peterson, Mike Rossen, David Sousa, William Stewart, Alan Sterling, Joanne Tierney, and Diane Vanderwell. And I understand you have a couple of names that you're.
I have a couple of names. Diane Vanderwell wants to remain on the committee, so she is one of my picks, and then Mike Rossen will be the second pick. So I'm looking for a motion or, or discussion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to confirm the appointments of Mike Rossen, Diane Vanderwell, for Sparks Planning Commission through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, I have a motion, look for a second. Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Does she have the time? I think that would be the more question. Okay. No further discussion, please vote. Passes unanimously. Diane, thanks for everything you do. Thank you. Okay, nine point two, consideration of possible approval of an expenditure of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents to purchase one twenty-twenty international HV six oh, six oh-seven truck with hook loader. Ron, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the council. It is.
As everybody wants for Christmas.
So, good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. I'm here, uh, before you today for your consideration of an expenditure of three hundred, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents to purchase one twenty-twenty international hook loader truck, similar to the one that's in the picture. They will be sister trucks, and they will be identical to each other. So, what I wanted to show you today with these pictures is two of the different applications that we use that truck for. Uh, this, in this application, of course, it adds to our snow and sand, uh, snow and ice control fleet. And in the other, uh, picture, it showed with a thirty-yard dumpster. We have six of those dumpsters that we use for various, uh, projects around the city. Could be, uh, picking up leaves in the fall, it could be working down on the river, clearing brush, weed management, weeds, uh, um, working alongside the roads, whatever, whatever the case may be. The ability to be able to haul thirty yards at a time versus ten yards at a time with a regular full-size dump truck obviously saves us time and energy and, and inefficiency. Uh, we will be purchasing this truck, utilizing, utilizing a jointer bid with the City of Reno. Four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars was approved for this project in the fiscal year twenty Storm Drain Improvement Fund. Uh, we were able to undercut that substantially due to government incentives through international truck. And, uh, this vehicle will be, is a new need and will be in addition to the fleet. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
I, I'll make a motion. I move to approve an expenditure of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents to purchase one twenty-twenty international HV six oh-seven truck with hook loader, sander, brine sprayer, and, and plow from Silver State International as part of the CIP for FY twenty-twenty, utilizing a jointer bid from the City of Reno Contract Number Two, zero, one, eight, zero, 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 five, nine, six. The purchase of this vehicle from Silver State International in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Ms. Bybee?
I, I just had a comment. Um, I want to, um, tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you were able, through the jointer bid, to get this at a, um, much reduced savings from what we originally bed, budgeted. Appreciate that, and the fact that it's multi-use for so many different functions will obviously get, you know, well-use out of, out of this new vehicle, but thank you for finding a good price for us and keeping us under budget. I appreciate that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point three, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a construction contract, AC five-six-two-seven, for the Recreation Gym HVAC Replacement Project. Uh, Brian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason. I'm going to bring up the vicinity map for this particular project. This is for the Recreation Gym that's, uh, adjacent to the Parks and Rec Administration offices over on ninety-eight Richards Way. It's, uh, the building is currently, it was built in nineteen sixty-four, so it's, it's definitely been around for a while, and the HVAC system is the original system that was built with the building, so its, maintenance costs have been increasing over the years, and it is definitely due for replacement. So this project will replace that existing system, it'll increase efficiency and increase the comfort level within the building. The, this building is used heavily by, uh, basically pub, public events along with childcare, so it's going to be a great project that'll help improve, uh, improve the building tremendously. We did get three bids, bids on this particular project. The lowest responsive bid was Mount Rose Heating and Air in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve a construction contract, AC dash five-six-two-seven, for the Recreation Gym HVAC Replacement Project to Mount Rose Heating and Air Conditioning, Inc., in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second. Ms. Bybee?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thanks, Brian. And yours is nine point four also, right?
Thank you. Yes, I also have the next project, which is, we're trying to get these constructed at the same time so that we could minimize downtime within the facility. This particular project is for the ADA upgrades of the restrooms, the ones when you enter the building on the right-hand side. There are the original restrooms that were built along with the building in 1964. So this will bring the restrooms up to current ADA standards and also improve the aesthetics of the restrooms. And we are planning construction for both of these projects, starting January 6th and through approximately March 13th, so that we can, like I said, minimize the downtime within the building. We do have, we did get five bids for this project. The lowest responsive bid was Gill Construction in the amount of $117,240. And with that being the end of my presentation, I would be, again, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions or comments? Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve construction contract AC 5626 for the Recreation Gym Restroom ADA Upgrade to Gill Construction Incorporated in the amount of $117,240.
Okay. I have a motion. Looking for a second. Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That also passes unanimously. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. Nine point five. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a master license agreement AC 5629 between the city of Sparks and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the construction, installation, and operation of small wireless communications. Brandon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Members of the council. Brandon Sendall, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here to talk to you about small wireless facilities or small cells and to present a proposed master license agreement that would govern the placement and operation of small cells within City Right-of-Way. Just to start with, what is a small cell? You all know the big macro cell towers that have a bunch of different antennas on them. Small cells are essentially more localized versions of the same thing. It's a radio unit and an antenna on top of some sort of structure. This is an actual example. This is just up above Picoli Park and Mackey Stadium up at UNR. This is one angle of it, but you can see up at the top, there is a small antenna and two small radio units here. From what I understand, this is about a year and a half old, so you can see another, this is the same pole, just from a different, different angle. And then, oh, sorry, no, I had, oh, I guess somebody removed them. Sorry, I had a couple of other renderings, but that gives you the general idea right here, just a radio unit and then the antenna on top. So basically, small cells are low-powered antennas that provide cellular and data connectivity on a smaller sale, on a smaller scale than a typical, you know, macro tower. For a little background, in May of this year, staff brought forward some code amendments in Title 12 and Title 20 to govern small cell placement. The bill established standards for placement, aesthetics, construction, and just general requirements for placement of small cells in the right-of-way. So this was needed mainly in response to federal law and a recent FCC ruling that addressed federal law. Under federal law, states and local governments can't prohibit or do something that has the effect of prohibiting the development of basically the wireless infrastructure, whether it's macro or small cell. So in addressing that, we met with AT&amp;T and Verizon a bunch of times over the last year to hammer out the details of these master license agreements. This agenda item is AT&amp;T, the next one is Verizon. We have representatives from both entities here with us. One of the notable sections in Title 12 of the code that was passed in May is the requirement for a master license agreement to address all of the placement within the right-of-way. That's pretty standard practice in the industry. So just a couple of highlights in the agreements. There's a $270 annual fee. That's under guidance from the FCC on what's presumed to be a fair fee because, you know, under federal law, we, local governments are prohibited from, double negative, but we're prohibited from prohibiting the deployment of small cells in the right-of-way, but we can charge a reasonable fee, and the FCC has determined that that is a baseline reasonable fee. Now, if staff determines that it's costing us more down the line, and we realize we're spending a lot of time, a lot of effort on this, we can develop a cost study and bring it back to you for approval if, that's if we feel that the $270, and that's a per-location fee.
Per pole?
Yes, per pole. So if staff feels that, you know, that's not a fair number, we may come back to you in the future for approval of a higher number. But being as, this isn't happening yet, it's hard to anticipate what that would be. Couple other highlights. Prior to installation, AT&amp;T and same with the next agenda item, Verizon would have to obtain all the regular course permits for their work. That's building permit application, encroachment permit for the right-of-way, street cut permits, anything like that. Assurity bonds required, general, commercial general liability policies. AT&amp;T is indemnifying the city for, for, I want to get this right, for claims against the city in connection with their construction and operation using City Right-of-Way. That accepts claims that are caused by the city's negligence. The agreement requires camouflaging, shielding, blending into surrounding structures to the extent feasible, and requires compliance with both our code, federal laws, ADA. That's one issue. You know, you can't put a pole right in the middle of the sidewalk that would violate ADA and any other applicable laws. So this has been a long, long project. You know, city engineering, building permitting, Teresa Parker's been involved, John Erickson, John Martini. It's been Armando Arnellis. It's been a pretty long and multifaceted effort here, involves a lot of different departments. But city staff does believe the proposed agreement brings the city into compliance with federal law and follows the recent directives from the FCC, but it retains as much control as we can have under federal law. So with that, I'll...
Okay. Questions or comments? Mr. Dare.
I have a couple. Is that a one-time fee? Or is that a yearly something?
There's an initial application fee. Depending on what the unit is, it's either $1,000 or $500, and then it's an annual fee.
It's an annual fee that they end up coming in. And then, when it comes to them working on our property, are they going to have to work through us? They're going to come tell us that they're coming in, so we know who's on our right-of-way? Do they get to just do what they want to do?
Oh, yeah. That's part of the building permit application. Each one of the locations would be under the building permit process. So they would come in with a building permit application and the site supplement, that's the one, it's the two-page exhibit to the agreement. They would come in with the building permit application, say, this is where we want to work, this is what we want to attach it to, and we, staff would look at that to make sure aesthetically it was right, that structurally the pole or whatever other structure is being used can actually support the weight, and really any other normal consideration that we would look at.
And how about, how about for future maintenance? Do they still, then they just get to do what they want, or do they still have to, I'm just, how much are we, I mean, I know we have no choice in some of these things, but what is it that we're actually fully giving away? Do we, it's our right-of-way, it's our property.
Future maintenance is actually, we took a page from what we do with NDOT, actually, because we have certain agreements with NDOT for maintenance in their right-of-way. And if it's a major change, if it's going to change the size or layout of the facilities, then they would need a new permit. For, if it, if it's just routine maintenance, if a unit goes down or something like that, the agreement requires them to give us 48 hours notice with the customer service desk through the street cut permit coordinator. And I can go through some other examples, but it requires 48 hours notice, and there's a whole string of requirements, you know, requiring traffic control, subject to the ASHTO federal guidelines, and, you know, a lot of other...
That answers the question. Appreciate it.
Bybee.
So, Brandon, this includes small cell towers or the actual small cell technology only in the city right-of-way? This agreement is just for the city right-of-way, correct?
That's correct.
So there is, there are a lot of poles and other locations throughout our community that would be on private property, correct?
That's correct. So that, that wouldn't be addressed.
Would not fall under that, but I'm trying to get a feel for how many, how many are we looking at? I mean, I'm understanding as we move towards 5G, how close they have to be to each other, and we're not at 5G yet, but I mean, my concern is within city right-of-way as well as in, on private property. How many, how many locations are we looking at? How close together? And then, on one corner, can multiple, if two or three different carriers are using them, can multiple be on the same corner, within the same, you know, same area? I am trying to get, to envision what the city is going to look like if there's going to be, how many more poles and how close they're going to be, city and private property?
It is hard to say exactly how many down the line. We don't, we don't know exactly, but to your question on multiple poles in one intersection, there is a spacing requirement, 150 feet. That's primarily to avoid clustering in one area. We don't want three, four, or five poles all right next to each other on an intersection where it's going to block, you know, the view of drivers, pedestrians, anything like that.
Okay. That's already in our, that's in our code already. That's in our code.
Yeah, that's actually in the agreement. That's in code that was...
Just in our general code, municipal code that we have.
Yes.
Mr. Arnellis.
Mayor Smith, members of the city council. I'm Armando Arnellis, your Assistant Community Services Director. So just to that point, it was in May that the city council adopted these amendments to Title 20 to our zoning code. Specifically, they were to Section 20.03.046, which is wireless communication facilities. And so those standards are in that section of code that was adopted by the city council earlier this year. You know, obviously, to the extent that there are concerns that potentially could be addressed through modifications to the code, and where the council would give that direction to the manager, we could follow up with revisiting some of those standards if there are specific concerns.
So the answer on how close, do we have that spelled out in the code right now?
150 feet.
So it is 150 feet, not just on one corner, but within...
In general.
A right-of-way, in general, 150. Okay. That was the answer I was looking for.
And that came from the spacing of NV Energy poles.
Okay.
At 150 feet.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
I think it's important to note, too, that if you live in a neighborhood with a sidewalk, is it three feet back is right-of-way from the sidewalk, or five feet? Two feet?
Or back of curb.
So a pole could get planted in your front yard if that's the need in the future. I don't anticipate it being the need in the near future, but down the road, that you could have a pole set in your front yard without your being able to say anything. So I want the citizens to be aware of that.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Mr. Anderson.
I'll make the motion, but I do want to thank staff for helping us out the best you could on this. I mean, granted, it is the federal government telling us what we get to provide, but I appreciate you guys doing your best to help set up some guidelines for this. So I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to approve the master license agreement AC 5629 with AT&amp;T to address AT&amp;T's construction, installation, operation of small wireless facilities on city-owned structure within city right-of-way.
Okay. I have a motion. Looking for a second. Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that with a comment. I would like to agree with Councilman Anderson, and we are pretty much hands tied. Federal government is kind of telling us that we have to do this, we don't have a choice. So I do appreciate our legal team and our staff working to preserve and protect as much local jurisdiction and jurisdictional control that we would like to maintain to the extent that we can, given the federal government's ruling. So I do second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you. Nine point six. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a master license agreement AC 5630 between the city of Sparks and Sacramento Valley Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. Brandon.
Sorry, you stuck with me for one more.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brandon Sendall, Assistant City Attorney. This is the second item. It's essentially the same. There are very few minor differences with this agreement compared with the one that you just agreed to, but this will govern the construction, placement, and operation of small cells within the city right-of-way.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Ms. Bybee.
Brandon, what are the small differences?
They're mainly to, it's nothing to do with the city's processes. It's mainly regard, just language differences, and it's mainly in the insurance section, the insurance requirements, but it's still a $4 million, $2 million, $4 million policy, but nothing substantive. To give you a little background, we were negotiating with AT&amp;T and Verizon, and after a while, the agreement started to get a little different. We realized that, and down the road, this is going to be a pretty big headache here if city staff is going to have to manage two different agreements that say two different things. So it took us a while to get both AT&amp;T and Verizon all in the same room and to hammer out exactly where we needed to come to an agreement on those different terms, but ultimately, it's the same agreement in terms of the city's obligations and how the process is going to go forward.
Okay. So you feel from a city perspective, we're able to work with both of these because the agreements are essentially, essentially the same to make it easier?
Yes.
Because I, obviously, we're being told by the federal government, but I don't want to make it harder for staff or for city. I appreciate, I appreciate you setting that up. So I guess I'm ready to make a motion unless someone else is. I can find a motion. I move to approve the master license agreement AC 5630 with Verizon to address the construction, installation, and operation of small wireless facilities on city-owned structures within the city right-of-way.
Okay. We have a motion. I'm looking for a second. Mr. Abbott. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay. Nine point seven. Consideration and possible acceptance of the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFER, for year, for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Hi, Debbie. Welcome.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Debbie Kinder, Compliance Accounting Manager for the record, and I'm before you today to obtain your acceptance of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the CAFER, which includes our audited financial statements, and for the first time this year, was produced in-house. I'm very proud of that. The accounting division and the compliance division really worked diligently to make this possible. I'm also here to request your approval for two associated plans of corrective action. Our auditors, regarding the audit, our auditors have found that the basic financial statements are materially correct and that they fairly represent the condition of the city, but their findings are noted in the compliance section of the report, the auditor's report section. And I'm pleased to report that we didn't have any financial findings, but we did have three federal grant findings this year, and therefore, we're required to file a corrective action plan with the federal accounting clearinghouse or auditing clearinghouse. The three findings were, the first one was that we reported the number of individuals that had been assisted by federal money was different than what we had supporting documentation for. Our plan of corrective action is to confirm that our reports and our supporting documentation, we'll get two sets of eyes on those in the future. The next finding was that our prevailing wage reports were not submitted in a timely manner. We are hoping to solve that by purchasing or researching some software that would do the compliance reporting or remind the contractors to get their reporting into us, and they would do that reminding automatically. The third finding is that although we were exempt from filing an environmental report, we didn't fill out the checklist that indicated why we were exempt from filling it out, so the plan of corrective action is to make sure we fill out that checklist. Yes. The second corrective action plan before you is... out that checklist. Yes. The second corrective action plan before you is the state corrective action plan, and that is as a result of a violation of NRS where we spent $1,848 more than we had budgeted in the community support function of the general fund. The overspend was related to a late unbudgeted expenditure related to the community triage center, and our corrective action plan is to communicate those late projects perhaps a little earlier so that we could get a transfer of budget authority to council before the June 30th deadline. If you approve the plans today and the presentation of CAFRs, then we will file for an application with the Government Finance Officers Association to consider our internally generated reports for an excellence in financial reporting award. If we get that award, it'll be the 39th year consecutive year. And that is all I have. One of our auditors is on site, Kurt Schlicker. If you have any questions, either he or I would be able to answer your questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Dare?
I just want to say, it was funny, this last week I had one of our constituents ask me if we ever get audited. And so I'm, well, yes, we do. And so I got to tell him that. And I would like to make a motion if we're ready for that.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dare.
I move to accept the comprehensive annual financial report and approve the plans of corrective action for fiscal year 2018, 2019 as presented, and authorize the chief financial officer to distribute the CAFR to interested parties and to the GFOA for award consideration. Thank you for all you guys do.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Ms. Bybee?
I'll second the motion, and I also would like to give my, extend my thanks for you getting it done in-house. I'm very impressed. So thank you.
Congratulations on that, Jimmy. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Good job, Debbie. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, 9.7 is, I'm sorry, 9.8 is a first reading. Madam Clerk?
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2770 for approval of Amendment Number One to a development agreement pursuant to NRS 278.0201 between the City of Sparks, Foothills at Wingfield LLC, and Albert D. Sino Construction Company, providing for planning and development of a site approximately 65 acres in size, generally located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, the public hearing for this Bill Number 2770 for its consideration and possible approval will be held at the regular City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, January the 13th, 2019. 9.9 is the first reading. Madam Clerk?
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2769 for approval of the development agreement, Amendment Number One pursuant to NRS 278.0201 between the City of Sparks, QK LLC, and Five Bridges Development Company, Inc., providing for planning and development of a site 386.87 acres in size located at 555 Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, this, the public hearing for this Bill Number 2769 for its consideration and possible approval will be held at the regular City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, January the 13th, 2019.
20.
What'd I say? Oh, 2009, 2020. We missed it. Sorry, Blake.
Missed it.
Yeah. Okay, 9, 9.1 is also a first reading.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2767, admitting Chapter 1.11 of the Sparks Municipal Code by adding there two provisions expressly allowing Sparks Municipal Court to conduct jury trials in appropriate circumstances, describing persons qualified to act as jurors, granting Sparks Municipal Court authority to establish policies and procedures for jury trials, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, public hearing of this Bill 2767 for its consideration and possible approval will be held at the regular City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, January 13th, 2020.
Good job.
Okay, we'll move on to 10. Public hearing, action items unrelated to planning and zoning. 10.1. Consideration, discussion, and possible direction to staff to engage outside counsel, AC 5628, regarding potential litigation regarding the opioid crisis and its impacts on the City of Sparks.
Mayor, members of the council, Brandon Sendall again, Assistant City Attorney, here to talk to you about drugs. For a little background, as you know, the city's not currently involved in any litigation regarding opioids. But as we discussed in the recent, it was the November 12th City Council meeting, a national negotiation class had been formed in the multi-district litigation out of Ohio, and on the 12th, the City Council considered whether to opt out of the MDL, the multi-district litigation. At that meeting, you also heard from Robert Eglett, Eglett Adams Law Firm, regarding that firm's proposed representation of the city. Here today are Mr. Eglett's Associate, Richard High, and Joe Bradley of Bradley, Drendel, and Janay. They're available to answer any questions. But the City Council decided to opt out and directed city staff to bring this item back for consideration of whether to retain outside counsel to pursue litigation. So this is that follow-up item. Again, the city attorney's office doesn't take a position on the policy decision of whether to initiate litigation, but to the extent that the City Council is inclined to do so, we would support the retention of Eglett Adams and Bradley, Drendel, and Janay. This was discussed a little before, but I want to just reiterate where we're at in the grand scheme of things. Eglett Adams, along with Reno-based Bradley, Drendel, and Janay are already representing a list of entities in Nevada in litigation regarding opioids. That includes the state of Nevada, Washoe County, City of Reno, Carson City, Douglas County, Churchill County, Lyon County, Humboldt County, Clark County, cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, and North Las Vegas, Lincoln County, Mineral County, a few others. So essentially, the City Council has three alternatives here. One would be to direct the city manager and city attorney's office to retain Eglett Adams and Bradley, Drendel, and Janay to pursue litigation against the appropriate opioid entities. There is a draft retention agreement in the materials. Second, could direct the city manager and city attorney's office to come back later and provide alternatives for other law firms or other options for outside counsel, or direct staff to take no action. With that, I can take any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move direct city manager, city attorney's office to retain the law firms Eglett, Adams, Bradley, Drendel, and Janay to pursue litigation against the appropriate opioid-related entities.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Oh, it is. Okay, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay, we'll hold that motion. We'll hold that motion. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council if you repeat that motion.
Move to direct city manager, city attorney's office to retain the law firms of Eglett, Adams, Bradley, Drendel, and Janay to pursue, and Janay.
Just to clarify, two different firms.
Yeah, okay. Eglett, Adams, and Bradley, Drendel, and Janay to pursue litigation against the appropriate opioid-related entities. Phew.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Brandon.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I might for a minute?
Sure.
Full disclosure, I have had no participation in any recommendation for any particular law firms. What I can tell both the City Council and the citizens of Sparks is that our selection of Bradley, Drendel, and Janay is probably one of the best decisions we could come up with as far as legal representation. I've been involved with litigation with them. I've been personally involved with them. My wife had a claim that they handled. And I'll tell you something, that is one hardworking, dedicated group of lawyers and staff members over there. So congratulations on this.
You know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say a few words here too, because I don't vote, so I didn't have to declare anything, but I worked with Joe 18 years ago when my daughter got in an accident, and they handled it very well. So always a pleasure. Okay, moving on to 11. We don't have any planning and zoning, public hearings and action items. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Bill, come on down. I didn't even see you sneak in here.
He was sitting with the band.
He was sitting with the band?
He was sitting with the band.
I thought he was young like a band member.
Thought he was going to play the tuba.
Yeah, he at least had a trump or something.
Welcome, Bill.
My name is Bill for the record, and Mr. Mayor, and, and City Council people. The only question I have is when you have a bid and you got the lowest number, can, is there any way somebody could tell you what the high number was when you have bids?
You know, you always come up here and ask us a question.
I know.
Why do you do that?
I do that because I, I, I'm interested.
Bill, in our packet, we usually have all the bids in our packet when we, when we look at it.
Oh, right.
So we see who, all the bids, matter of fact.
Like this one here on, on 9-4, 117,000, had five bids.
It's what?
It was five bidders.
Uh huh. Why is it important for the highest bid when we're taking the lowest bid?
I know, but who knows if it's, if they're, they're any good at what they're saying.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Bill. I'm sorry.
I know, I know. But I'm serious. I just wanted, would like to know what the high bid would be.
We can get that information to you.
Good, okay. Maybe we can do that in the, in the future, put it down there?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you hear that, Bill?
149?
Mm-hmm.
149.
Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak? You know, I thought we were going to have a record here. I think it brings back to council where nobody spoke. This may be the first time, but I didn't see you sitting over there. I knew you had to say something. Okay, comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Mr. Dare?
I just want to say Merry Christmas to our staff. I'm sure we all kind of want to do that. And to our police and our fire and our first responders that work over Christmas and all the different things. We appreciate it. Please be safe.
Excuse me, Mr. Crutz?
Just wanted to make sure everybody recalls that we are not going to have a second meeting in December, or, which would normally be on the 23rd. We've completed all our business today, and as, as customary with our past practice, we're going to, we're going to take one off.
That's a good thing.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Okay. Ms. Bybee?
I would like to give a huge shout out to Tracy Parks and Recreation and Special Events for our Christmas tree lighting, for the parade, despite the horrific weather conditions, all the crew that was out there making sure that still happened. And a big shout out to Public Works for an amazing float that they built for the council and mayor. They did a top-notch job. So thank you so much. Hard work sometimes goes unnoticed, but we noticed, and I want to just thank you and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Don, you had, Donald, you had, no?
I was Public Works, and we have a shout out for Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Adams?
I'd like to thank those Sparks staff, city employees who drove the dignitaries around.
Everybody, yes.
Were able to drive brand-new vehicles without crashing any of them, exposing any liability to the city. They didn't run over anybody, so I, I'd like to say thanks to all of them as well.
Well, the thing is, we had over 27 elected officials and dignitaries that wanted to be in the parade, and usually we have 10, nine? About nine or 10. And so I'll, I want to thank Dolan and Dolan Automotive Group and Champion Chevrolet. They provided 27 cars or somewhere in there, 27 cars for the parade, and they're all brand-new cars, so they were in luxury for a minute. And then I'd like to also, from me and my family to you and your family, wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you in January. Thanks for all of you, all that you do, and make us look good. Appreciate it. Without any more comments, without objection, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of December 9th, 2019 with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Dare?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Abbott?
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Crutz?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number four, agenda. 4.1. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by agency member Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by agency member Anderson. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And yes.
It's up now. Okay, we had an aye, so we'll vote on the next one. Of item number five, 5.1. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of November 25th, 2019. Do I have corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve as presented by agency member Dare. Do I have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
I have a second by agency member Lawson. No discussion, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
It tells my thing's not working.
Okay. Everybody's aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Voice vote by Mayor Smith. Item number six, business items. 6.1. Consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of November 9th, 2019 through November 21st, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by agency member Dare. Do I have a second? By agency member Anderson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Aye.
R.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.2. Okay, okay, everyone pay attention. We've got a real motion here. Or we're going to have a motion after we have a presentation. I'm sorry. 6.2. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of an expenditure of $293,667.80 to purchase high-security safety barricades and bollards for the downtown safety barricades project Phase One from Delta Scientific utilizing a jointer with the GSA contract number 47QWSWA1AD003B. Amber?
Madam Chair, agency members, I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager, and next to me is Police Chief Pete Crawl. Yes, this item is for an expenditure to purchase the equipment to install, the equipment that we'll need to install for the safety barricades, both in-ground and mobile, and the safety bollards for downtown. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Crawl to start the presentation on why we need this expenditure, and then I'll be back with some more specific details.
Madam Chair, members of the agency, Pete Crawl, Police Chief. As you know, event safety and security for special events is a very high priority for the City of Sparks. The city's downtown area brings in numerous events that attract large crowds of visitors. The city is making it a priority to provide additional protection against outside threats seeking to make large impacts on life and safety. Sadly, we have seen public events around the world marred by both terrorist attacks and vehicle crashes. From world centers like Berlin, Paris, and London, to events such as the City of Reno's Wingfest, vehicles have become a weapon of choice. With outside threats to special events unfortunately becoming more of a concern, city staff worked to develop a plan to provide a higher level of security for downtown events. The downtown area was looked at for a range of small and large-sized special events, such as the Lavender Festival, concerts in the new Downtown Event Center, and the Best in the West Rib Cookoff. Current construction in the area and future planning for development was also taken into consideration. A city team was assembled with staff from community services, Public Works Maintenance, Parks and Recreation, Police and Fire. The team was established to develop an overall downtown safety barricades project, looking at all the different types of current special events. The plan considered access for first responders, Public Works Maintenance, event promoters, as well as visitor safety and security. For the purpose of testing new pedestrian and vehicle, vehicular traffic control concepts, security products, and budgetary consideration, the overall project was divided into smaller phases. In determining a specific security product to evaluate, I reached out to other police departments and cities to learn about means and methods of protecting such threats, protecting against such threats, excuse me. Delta Scientific was introduced to the Sparks team, and their product came with real-life experience and recommendations from the Fremont Police Department. Sparks staff reached out to the local representative from Delta Scientific for guidance to better understand the security products and options available.
So this map shows the locations that we're considering installing this equipment with Phase One of this project. If you'll look to the right of your screen, you'll see a red dot indicating- If you'll look to the right of your screen, you'll see a red dot indicating a pop-up. One of the largest vulnerabilities of the city's downtown corridor was determined to be the long, straight roadway that's just east of Victorian and Pyramid. Due to the high-speed run-up threat that's in this location, the security equipment that we chose was the high-security, shallow-mounted barricade system. To give you an idea of what this looks like, these are the barricades that will be manually deployed, cranked up into place when we need to restrict access, and to give you an idea These barricades have a crash rating of stopping a 15,000-pound vehicle moving 50 miles an hour.
Oh, yeah, baby!
So I realize that's really fast, so we can start it one more time, just 'cause it's fun. So again, due to that high-speed run-up and the threat that's at that, this was the, this was the equipment chosen for that intersection at Victorian and Pyramid. Also offered in this equipment purchase is mobile, surface-mounted units. These are units that are on a trailer that can be moved into place and utilized when and if needed. The units contain a hydraulic panel that allows the barricade to go up and down to either allow access or to restrict it when needed. The city's team decided to deploy, or to try two of these mobile units, a 12-foot one and a 16-foot. Those are the openings of the widths to allow. And one additional advantage to these is the flexibility to move these anywhere we need it, and could also be used in emergency response applications. Throughout this map, you'll see numerous red dots that are either labeled fixed or removable, and those are in regards to the bollards that are included with this, with purchase requests. Two type of bollards are included, a fixed one, which would be permanently installed, and other situations removable, where a sleeve would be mounted into the ground, and it would allow public maintenance or other city staff to either remove or install that barricade, that bollard as needed. In sourcing the security and safety project, if approved, the city would be using a joiner provision allowed under NRS 332-195, utilizing a GSA contract. This is a U.S. General Service Administration contract. The expenditure will also allow city staff to work with a contractor to actually install the equipment we're seeking to purchase here. The city is currently advertising for that contractor, and I'm hoping to be back before you in early January with that installation project. Currently, construction would be expected in late February to early March, and looking to have everything installed by late May. The reason to seek purchasing the equipment is the long lead time to get this equipment here. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or show you the video again.
Okay, do we have, we have any questions? Agency Member Lawson.
So we appropriated some money from Tourmark for this barricade. Are you guys aware of that? It was $100,000 or $150,000?
Yes, sir, I believe it is $100,000.
Okay. So we're gonna move that money over, I think we're having a meeting in January, too, so we can move that money over from there. Thank you.
Okay. Agency Member Dare.
I had a quick question on the one fixed one. What, I see the value on each of them, but the one on the fix that goes towards the parking lot, what does, what does that do? Having bollards protecting the parking lot there?
Are you doing specifically right there?
Yeah. What, I don't understand what that's for.
Basically, anytime you have an opening larger than five foot wide, five foot is a generally good spacing for bollards. It does allow ADA, but it also, it also prevents the smallest vehicle that somebody could use as a threat. So that opening was larger than that. It would take somebody kind of maneuvering to get through there, but we did try to assess all of the openings that were bigger than that to see what the best solution was.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Agency Member Smith.
You know, this is a long-time coming. This is the smartest thing we can do for all of our, it's happening here, we do all the events, and you know, it's a different world out there, so we have to take these precautions, and I'm glad to see this done. This is wonderful. Perfect.
And I would just like to thank all of you for the extensive work, research you've done, really looking at what the best products for the money appropriated that we could, that we could do, and a very good use of our redevelopment fund to make Victorian Square safe during our special events. I mean, it's a reality, unfortunately, and I think we can't take that lightly, and we don't. So I appreciate all your hard work. I think this is a much-needed step. Look forward to having it in place for this upcoming, you know, special event season. And I guess with that, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, I've got, sorry, I've got one more comment by Agency Member Abbott.
Yeah, I have a quick question. On, I think it's on the map, Victorian Plaza Circle, I think is that street name? There's a mobile, and then is there a reason why we don't have anything on 10th Street yet, or for like a removable or something?
So this is Phase One of this project, so keep in mind that the mobiles, these were suggested areas where they could go. We can use them however needed.
Got you.
The full plan does go all the way down to 15th Street with all the new changes at the Maranelle Event Center. We picked what we knew was happening right now.
Got you. So we're gonna just, okay, cool.
We also tried to identify some areas where not only it would take away, or it would help with the threat that Chief Croll was concerned about, but also looking at where maintenance is spending a lot of time setting things up, where special events and first responders needed access.
No, taken. Thank you.
Okay. And Amber, I did have one more question. So how many phases will this be, the full project?
I do not have that information at this time. Like I said, the overall project was quite extensive. It was quite large, budgetary-wise, as well as all the changes that are happening in our downtown. So with our best information that we have right now, this is kind of our pilot to see how this works.
Phase One, and then Chief will move for, well, with both of you, will move forward, whether it's two, three, four phases later. This is just the start. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Looking for a motion?
I should for the motion.
Okay.
I move to approve an expenditure of $293,667.80 to purchase high-security safety barricades and bollards for the Downtown Safety Barricades Project, Phase One, from Delta Scientific utilizing a joiner with the GSA contract number 47QSWA18D003B.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Agency Member Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Okay, that brings us to item 7.1, comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Okay, moving on to 7.2, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Seeing none, we are adjourned.